I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this day you've given us. God, thank you for a new year. And God, we just pray that you would make 2025 the greatest year in the in the life of the school district of Huntsville. And God, I pray that tonight, as we do business for the school district and hear the things that are going on, God, I pray that you would just be with us tonight as we meet. God, help us to make wise decisions, decisions that honor you. And God, help us to make decisions that are what's best for the kids of this district. And God, I just thank you for all your many blessings. And most of all, thank you for your son, Jesus, in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, we're gonna call the January seventh, 2025 school board meeting to order. We have a forum. Ms. Wendy is not out here tonight. She's attended a funeral, so I'll be running the meeting tonight.
All right, all right. You've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. One thing I would like to add to the consent agenda that came in this afternoon, we would like to add a little discussion that we're gonna have with his honor, the mayor, Travis Boxton, who's with us tonight. And so I've added him in as a down in the superintendent report. And when we get to that, we will visit with him a little bit. We have lots of minutes from all of our meetings we had last month. I knew we had a lot of meetings until we sat down and actually started working all that up. I didn't realize we'd had that many. The enrollment report has been provided for you. And the district financial report has been provided for you. Both of those are, I mean, the enrollment report is what it is. And the financial report, we feel very strong with where we're at financially. Halfway through the year now, we are beginning to start to push for the end of the year and then begin to start putting in place some of the things and some of the thoughts that will need to take place for for next year. So I would recommend, if there's no questions, I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Can I make some other motion? Say it, Natalie. All in favor?
Thank you. All right. As under administration reports, we do we do have Jennifer here to talk to us about the primary school. And I'm excited to hear what she has had for us, so I'll just turn it over.
Thanks. Well, coming back the first day after break, when you've been in that role between what date is it even?
Not already fair enough.
Yeah, it isn't. But bear with me. And the other half of my brain is not here tonight to help me with this. And so if you don't know the great and amazing Ceramonek, you're missing out. But she truly is the brain behind Watson Primary. And she just lets me be there sometimes. And so today, we're gonna go and dive into the academics at Watson Primary. And you're gonna have to bear with me with my glasses here. And so when we're talking about K two academics, we're talking about the very foundational pieces, the building blocks before they get to intermediate school. So you've heard how in K two, we learn to read because in three, five, or three and up, they're reading to learn. So a lot of the data that you're seeing is kind of drilled down to the microscopic level of what reading is, which is where our focus continues to be, is in the literacy. And sorry, Bailey told me to turn this on and I forgot. So, okay, the three types of assessments that derive everything that we do at Watson Primary are the ATLAS assessment. That is a brand new assessment to the state of Arkansas in the K two. And it is not without its faults right now. And the old adage of they're building the plane while they're flying it is truly what's happening. So there's a lot of tweaks going on. And so it's just not the most reliable data that we have right now. But what we have taken at primary this year is what they call the screener. It's very different than what they take in three through 10. Is it three through 10? Very different. It's more on the screening and identifying some deficits. It requires an intervention plan on some of those cases. So that's the ATLAS. The the Acadence piece, and Connie's been in the in the education world, they used to call it Dibbles. It's more of a universal screener. And it's something that we've used for many years. And so it's a little bit more reliable for us right now. It's we focus on the Acadence. So a lot of the skills that you've got kids, you've heard nonsense word fluency, first sound fluency. Those are all those basic building blocks of literacy that we focus on. And so we'll see some of that data. And then the CFAs are the assessments that the teachers generate to, you know, kind of check the temperature and see how the students are doing. So we'll start with the ATLAS. The ATLAS, you see the math results. And we're, this is it. We took it in September. The students have been there, you know, less than a month whenever they were given it. It was all on the computer. And Nick has a teacher wife who probably came home very frustrated because it was, has a lot of skill set, requires a lot of skill sets of little kids, you know, and it just, it was their first time to see some of this stuff. So what you see is basically the state on top and how we compare to the state. It's basically broken down to at risk or not at risk. That's all the two numbers that you see. So the red would be at risk and the blue would be not at risk. You can see that we're right there or above the state, how the state's looking overall in math. Same thing for literacy. And you see that we're maintaining pretty close to the state in literacy as well. But again, there's not a whole lot of really good information that we're getting out of that quite yet, hopefully later on. And I will say on the literacy, that did require some testlets that had to be given, so how students performed. They had to take some testlets, have an intervention plan that was put in place. So all of that is housed in their state data system. The parents have constant access to us. And I'm going too fast. Do you want me to slow it down? Okay, sorry. But we did find some big inconsistencies with the data. And actually, in the kindergarten, there was a huge section that was completely invalidated by the state across the state. So it just, like I said, they're still tweaking it. They're still figuring it out. So didn't give us great data. But as a matter of fact, we were supposed to do middle of the year interims. And they canceled that back. And it was, they pushed the window from November into January, and then they've canceled it all together. And they're saying, we'll do our accountability piece that is like the three through 10 assessment, but we won't do the middle of the year screener. So we're just kind of, you know, hanging in there and just waiting to hear more from the state on that. So this is just a graphic that kind of tells you how the Acadence is driving our instruction. So when they give that Acadence test, it will identify students who appear to be in need of support. That generates kind of that validation. So there's some subtest skills. And that just tells us, is this real, are they really struggling, or was that a glitch? So we kind of validate that. And then if it's valid, these students are struggling in these areas, we start that plan of support. So kind of plan, do, check. We put a plan in place. We implement that plan. Typically, tier two and tier three interventions that are happening. And then we monitor that, see how they're doing, and then we plan again. And then that review of outcomes is when we hit those, Bailey, what did I do? We take those mid-year assessments and say, okay, how are we doing? So those are the bigger checks. So those numbers are telling us where our areas of instruction are weak and where we need to beat up that instruction. Okay, so now we're gonna get into some specific data. I will not go into a whole preaching lesson about what all of these numbers mean or these acronyms mean. But if you want to know, I will tell you, F S F is first sound fluency. Then you have letter name fluency and phoneme segmentation. And then you get into nonsense word fluency. So like I said, if you want to know more, ask me. I will be glad to tell you, but I don't want to drown you in a lot of information. But we saw some really great things out of kindergarten this year. We tried some different things. And so we're excited to see the results. But I'll kind of give you the overall. If it's green, that means we're up from where we were last year. Okay? So first sound fluency, at the beginning of the year, we were at forty six percent. And mid-year, we're at sixty nine percent. And that is higher than where we were at mid-year last year. Phoneme segmentation, we are down fourteen percent from last year, but we figured out what we did wrong. We were assessing using some different vowel types. We figured out what was going on. And we anticipate that gap to shore up pretty quick as we've kind of changed the practice that we're using. And then nonsense word fluency, that's correct letter sounds, at sixty five percent. So.
I think that's important, that middle block, that you were down, but you have identified what that is.
Yeah.
That's that's beauty of the mid-year assessment and formative type assessments and everything, that to be able to test that, find out what the problem is, and then make them address it.
Right. And really, the work of the school. I mean, that's really what we're doing. We're constantly seeing, okay, what happened? How can we figure out what did happen? And how can we fix that? So, okay, so next, first sound fluency. This is, you know, it's just like what it looks like. You want less red and yellow, more green and blue. And that's what we saw in first sound fluency. Just another visual to show that we were up from forty six percent to sixty nine percent. Again, in phoneme segmentation, that's where we said we knew what happened. So we're gonna make those changes and see that kind of shore up. And then correct letter sounds, sixty five percent was up two percent from last year. So this is kind of the overall view of all of that. What are we talking about? Letter ID, what I feel like is a really important thing to hit on, is that beginning of the year, letter ID correct, you see, was at one percent. What that number really represents is two students in of the entire hundred and thirty eight students that we had tested in kindergarten. Two of those students knew all of their letter sounds correctly, or all of their letters correct in September. So that's a lot. That's a big hurdle to overcome right out of the gate. So we assessed again in October. We were up to thirty seven percent. And we said, hey, we gotta set a smart goal here. What do we, what do we commit to making sure this number is? And obviously, at mid-year, you want it, we want to say a hundred, but we knew, you know. And so realistically, we set that at seventy five percent, and they met that goal. They busted their tails, and they did a great job. What's even better at that is right below, you see the automatic. And it's one thing for students to be able to identify the letters, and it's another to be able to say them quickly. And when they can say them quickly, they're more geared up to start putting that work to practice into making sounds, making words. And so being up fourteen percent on the automaticity is a big deal. Same thing with sounds. They were correct at forty six percent, but they were automatic at forty four percent. So that just tells me they're primed to start putting those to practice and making words with it, which is the whole purpose of all of this. So C V C, that's just reading your, you know, consonant vowel, consonant, cat, dog, pig. We don't typically assess that at this point in the year in kindergarten, but we did. We wanted to push them. And so we did. And forty three percent of our students were meeting the benchmark. That's really, that is amazing at mid-year. And then fifteen percent automatic. And then red words, if you don't know what those are, high frequency words, Natalie.
I go kindergarten every time.
Those are those red words. But those are, your high frequency words are hard words, which is important in building that reading fluency. And we don't typically assess that at this point, but they're at thirty five percent of the words that they taught. So that's important, that just assessing on the words that they taught. So I just, my biggest brag is those teachers working so hard. They come in and tweak to their instruction. They've been open to that, that P L C process really working, looking at that data, committing to making those changes, and setting the bar high for those kids. Because we know the challenges, you know, that we face when we have two kids coming in that know letters. But it's kind of, so what now what? We gotta do it, right? Okay, so now first grade, same thing. They don't do first sound fluency, so and we don't do phoneme segmentation at mid-year. So we kind of jump to nonsense word fluency, fifty six percent, sixty three percent. All of those being green shows you that they were up where they were at this time last year. I will say, our oral reading fluency is up five percent, and that is a huge celebration to be at five percent. And then accuracy was a six percent gain from last year. So this is kind of diving into nonsense word fluency. And nonsense words is just like giving you a C V C word that's not a real word. So when I say that, it's an important skill because whenever they see multi-syllable words, they need to be able to break those words up and not just always see a word that makes sense to them. So our beginning of the year, fifty percent of our students met benchmark. Now we're at fifty six percent. That, like I said, is up five percent. It's not where we want to be. We would like to see that more at eighty percent. So we know this is where we need to intervene with our students. It's a trick because you don't want to just teach them how to read nonsense words. You want to teach them the skill that they're missing. So whole words read and just the difference is that they read the whole word and not use the word myth and not go, mm, it. You know, there's a difference in doing that or just saying myth. And so whole words read. And they are at fifty five percent. That's up from nine percent from last year. But and at the beginning of the year, there's no red because that bar is set so low at the very, very beginning of the year. But it goes way up at the mid-year. And so that's why we start to see some of that red creep in. Last year, we actually saw our numbers here go down. And so we, this year it didn't. It went up. And so we know the things that we're putting into practice are working. Okay. Oh, wait. Sorry. Words correct, we, let's make sure I'm on the right page. Yeah. So middle of the year, twenty eight percent of our students are meeting benchmark, which is up from five percent. So one thing that we want to be really careful when we talk about oral reading fluency, this is not a measure that tells you whether the student is reading on a great level. At this point, it's very difficult to even say, what does that look like when you're just talking about the microscopic levels of reading? So what this does tell you is their overall reading health and whether they're on track to meet those benchmarks the next go around. That makes sense. The other thing that's important to note is that these passages are written for an end of year first grade, beginning of second grade reader. There are gonna be a lot of skills at mid-year that they have not covered yet. And those of you that have had first graders, I think all of you, first grade, since the beginning of time, has been like drinking from a fire hydrant, and you're talking about reading. It is a lot of information at once. And so they're just getting a whole lot. And they're just starting to kind of, by the time they're second grade, they gotta figure out what to do with all of that information. And so there's a lot there. We're still not where we want to be, but we know we're growing, and that's what's important. So just some of the things that we're doing, we've increased the pacing and the skills that we've taught. We're taking some steps to increase the amount of time students have to practice. That's really where we've been focusing on. And so that they can build that automaticity. We do small group instruction every single day. If there is one non-negotiable, I don't care what is happening Christmas party day, every teacher was doing small group reading instruction. That is non-negotiable at Watson Primary. Tier two and tier three groups are skill-based, and we are targeting areas of weakness to give them more explicit instruction. Again, more reps, more practice, more exposure. And then our wing groups are the same thing. And then the other thing is just being very mindful about when we provide those opportunities. Looking for outside of the box, like math time, how are we giving them reading practice during those math instructional times? So we've been, you know, just working as a team on that. And then the accuracy, sorry, I kind of dwelled on the other. We were at thirty percent, meeting the benchmark. This is up six percent. So students are more accurate. They're just still slow at this point. This is a picture of what a C F A would look like. So when we kind of give that oral reading fluency and we see that there are some deficits there, we kind of drill down to the word level. And this just helps our teachers see what specific types of skills are they missing? Is it in the C V C, open vowel? Is that a digraph? So that just kind of helps them target specifically where that intervention needs to happen. So my kindergarten, very proud of our first grade team and the work that they're doing because they're making some big gains. Okay, so second grade. I told you, first grade is like drinking out of a fire hydrant. They're getting a whole lot of skills, and it takes them a minute in second grade to figure out what to do with all of this. So there's all of these rules that you're telling them about words and how they work, and now they've got to put it to practice. So it's not uncommon for us to kind of see a slowdown at the beginning of the year in second grade as they kind of say, oh, yeah, I remember you telling me about digraphs. And when I see S H, I don't say, I have to say shh and all of that. So students did come in lower, starting out lower in these areas than they did from the, from coming in from first grade. They were a little bit lower as a group, but they're still not growing like we would like. So our middle of the year ORF is, or oral reading fluency is. Um, so our middle-of-the-year orf is, or oral reading fluency is down four percent from last year and our accuracy's down a little bit. So we knew that when we left for Christmas break, um, we had our PLC meeting, um, that week and we, we just owned it and said, okay, what do we need to do? We have made some changes in kindergarten and first that we had not made in second grade, so we're going back and saying, okay, what do we need to look at? Um, so we're talking about looking at our pacing, um, did we, are we kinda going back too far? We, um, re-teaching too much at the beginning of the year? Do we need to make that a little bit more rigorous coming in? Um, do we need to look at changing up what our curriculum is? There are some schools that use, um, a different curriculum in the phonics that we're looking at. Um, it's not super different than ours, just the pacing's different. Um, so is that something, a change that we want to make? But again, these students that are flagging a yellow and red doesn't mean they can't read, it just means that they're just not reading fast enough. And so that's what we're really trying to work on, building that fluency, um, and help them meet that benchmark the next time. So they are working hard, um, they, I mean, I'm telling you, they are hitting the ground running at seven forty-five every morning and they are ready to go. So I think once we look and try to dive in and see what changes we make, we'll see the same changes in the second grade next year and see some improvements there. Okay, um, sorry, accuracy, forty-two percent, and it just kinda dives in, we're, uh, down about five percent. So overall, kinda fill in the gaps, that so what now what? Um, we're gonna keep using our data to drive our instruction. Uh, we're gonna administer those screeners to identify the health of those students, the reading health, um, doing those diagnostic assessments to really drill in and determine what specific skills and deficits and plan that instruction and, and progress monitoring around that. We'll continue our tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three results. And like I said, the biggest thing is that we are seeing growth and that's what we want. So celebrating those small victories every day. Right, I would say any questions, but, oh, and this is just a breakdown, I forgot about that one, sorry. Um, just the, the percentage of students that we have, um, receiving some intensive intervention. But, man, Sarah Mullenix got her eye on it all the time, I promise you, so. All right, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, don't ask me.
This one's fabulous, she gave a great presentation.
Thank you.
No, I have a question about when we, the fall school board training, the Hope, Washawn maybe is, or some, Worsom, gave a presentation, explained the grades and everything, and it was very misleading. In fact, I was so excited because there's one part of that ATLAS test and it, she said, there's this whole, it's not called classroom resources, but there's this, and you're supposed to be able to click on there, and every day, every teacher should, if they're having struggle with any standard, they just click there and that information's there. And I know at the middle school level, it is not there. Is that what you two are finding also?
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's just not rolled out, I think, like they hoped it would.
The website says, um, in the future, coming soon. Yeah, it does. It made it sound like it was right there and every teacher, there should not be any reason that you didn't have any problem. Okay, I just wonder if, maybe, I was hoping that started at your level and we're working their way now.
Yeah.
It's very, it's supposed to be very similar to TLI, I mean, you remember.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
I loved TLI.
I did, but yeah, there's just nothing there. But they made it sound like, oh, every teacher should just be able to click right there, there'd be no reason not to be able to teach that, cause you'd have several examples and you just could use them.
There's still a lot of work out in the state.
Yeah.
To be done on that.
Yeah, but they should've said, but it'll be coming soon, they shouldn't have said it's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that was my, okay, that was, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Good information. It's important for us to look at where we are and, and where, where we can improve and what needs to be done to get there. And, uh, so it's great to see the mid-year results up and won't be long till we talk about end of year and, uh, where we are with that, so we'll look forward to seeing that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, moving, uh, down to the superintendent's report, some, since Travis is here and we would like to talk for just to mention, the baseball softball building is, is, is certainly moving forward. The steel has been ordered for the building package, the, the bids for the subs are due towards the end of the month, around the twentieth of the month. We will know by the next board meeting where we are with those. Uh, we have had to, we've worked with the city through, through planning and that has been a, been a great experience and we appreciate all the help that, that you all have had. And in the process of talking about that, we, we have kinda hit on the idea of, of multi-use. And I know previously in another district, we did, we did the same type of thing, you know, we need our facilities at certain times and then at other times, they're, they're not used as much. And so, uh, having facilities where we can have shared parking and shared things like that are, are an advantage for both the district and, and for the city. So, uh, could you come on up and kinda, kinda share some of the things we've talked about?
Absolutely, uh, yeah, and you've got a shot of this. I wanna say, on the front side of this thing, um, this was just by happenstance. So previous administration, we had kind of a master plan with a different bunch of architects. And we didn't really know kind of where we were, what, what actually was going on over there at the, in the green space over next to the activity center. So now that Height Jackson, Mark over at Height Jackson, uh, he had proposed a master plan, so to speak, for you all to show us basically, uh, where this new indoor practice facility was gonna go. In that, we kinda cabbaged on to the idea of where a future expansion for football field, softball, baseball, things of that nature are. But we, as a city, are very excited to see these things going in over there and we hope that we, you all see them to fruition. These are fantastic ideas. Uh, and in that, I had, I had talked to Mr. Law about, uh, an idea that we had had. Obviously, you know, in this area right here, all this area that you see right here, there's just nothing developed or whatever, that's, that's basically our College Street Park. That's where we're putting in our new splash pad facility, possibly a new amphitheater for the citizens of Huntsville. In, in between those two places there, where you see all this additional parking around through there, um, you, uh, there's a little bit of a tributary there. So what's gonna end up happening is the drainage from the splash pad, we've already visited with ADQ and things of that nature, we can actually drain, that being potable water, we can actually drain into that creek, right? Well, if you, if you follow that just to the north, I guess, over to, to behind the CTE building, or we've envisioned this, we've been talking about it for about two years, visiting with the school district, in regards to co-op-ing, basically parking all the way around, maybe at some point in time, the big holler there behind the CTE building, blocking that off, making a more cohesive, uh, tributary through there to where it's not flooding all the time down there at Butterball and all that. Obviously, there's some things that we gotta do on Kane Street to accommodate these things, but this kinda sped up that and we love the idea of what the proposal was. With that, we've offered the variance to the school district that y'all requested as far as putting that, uh, indoor practice facility in. But what we're, what we're proposing to you tonight, or what, or what we're talking about tonight, not really a proposal, and this is very crude, we've done this really quickly, uh, all this parking that you've seen all the way around there, that, that runs along the flood plain where that creek is, and what we've added in here using these spaces from Height Jackson, it's about a hundred and fifty additional parking spaces over there for the school district. Now, what does that mean? That means that we're cutting out part of your, uh, proposed parking area there, about ten spaces altogether, you can use this for the overflow. Uh, another thing that we found out from Mark over at Height Jackson, Damish Law, was this future pond area there in the center, even though we have to have that for retention, the, 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 uh, city would co-op with the school district if we did an underground retention instead of a ponding area, which makes it a little bit flatter, we could help you all pay for that if, if, if we're allowed to do the parking. Overall, what this does, and what my fear's been since we, since we bought the, uh, the park over there, uh, from the county, our fear is, is that we're not gonna have enough parking. We think that this splash pad, as expansive as it's become, uh, and the new bathroom facility and all that, amphitheater in the future, we think that we're not gonna have enough parking up there at the senior citizen center and all that. It's what forced us to kinda think outside of the box about a year ago when we started, started this whole thing, and why I approached Mr. Law to see if y'all would be at least amicable to us putting in that parking. Now, obviously, the parking that I'm proposing, the hundred and fifty spots up to that area there that, that, uh, that you're looking at there on the map, obviously free use, y'all can use that, we can use some of your oils for overflow parking. Obviously, in the summertime, whenever these things coincide with the splash pad, there will probably be things going on at the activity center and things of that nature. But any time that we have, like, for graduation, for example, all that overflow parking there, we're offering to basically put it in for you along the flood plain there, is what we're offering to do. And we will obviously maintain it. The other thing that I'll bring up a point in is what the, what the master plan that the school's design is, is, uh, basically a road that encompasses the whole entire, uh, uh, I guess, it's a road that goes all the way around it. What we're, what we're talking about doing is putting in a road right now, right here, that actually extends that road on out and goes all the way around. And you can see in my crude writing up there, I kinda drew a line up. We actually own all that up to college, the, the city does, and at, at some point in time, put in a future right-of-way for maybe a two, possibly three-lane road up through there. And then the other thing is, is bridging the gap between the CTE and, and that at some point in time to give you more ingress egress. As you all know, Kane Street is probably not the most ideal place to turn in on it. The other thing that we gotta work on for you all, uh, and we gotta get with the state co-op, is the lighting of actually turning in to the, to the deal up there. We noticed that the other day as we were going in for the big wrestling event that they had up there. But anyway, this is, this is an idea that I think that would benefit the school district as well as ourselves, and we would certainly love to co-op with you all on that. And kudos to you all for finally putting together a master plan of this because beforehand, the previous administration, I'm not knocking them, but, but what happens is, is on the planning commission many years ago, we would get piecemeal ideas, and so, hey, we're gonna do this, but it's not exactly what we're gonna do. So we, we kinda get conflicting information. This is the first comprehensive master plan that the school district has come up with since, since the inception of the, of the activity center. Mr. Law, I appreciate you for that. Uh, I think you're kinda the catalyst that made that happen. And so we really love the idea and love the game plan, and we just wanna work with you to help, to help us out in the future and to help you all out in the future. So any questions of me and what we're doing?
The truth of the matter is, we have a limited amount of space to use.
Yes.
You know, you never have quite enough land.
Never.
And, and land is going to be hard for us to acquire around there. And so I, you know, I, you know, that, I appreciate you saying that, but really, we had a committee that met and we realized that we had a limited amount of land and we needed to find the maximum use of it. And so the, uh, we brought Height Jackson in and they hired engineers to do that. And, and that, that has kinda led us to where we're at.
Led us, yes.
And I, I, I think that, that the mixed-use idea really only benefits both of us.
Absolutely. Well, and, and I, I think about it, of course, played football here on the old football field and, and, and played a lot whenever I was a kid, going to watch ballgames over there in the practice area, right? And what happens now is you've got a thousand and one kids running over there during football games and, and what have you. And it's not probably the most, and thank God y'all put the fence up around it, so it, it's a little safer than what it used to be. But the other thing about it is, is that park's kinda, if, everybody knows where that's at, it's kinda downhill and it's kind of a safe place, safe haven for everybody, right? It's monitored pretty well, uh, put up a lot more lighting, some more cameras down there and things of that nature. My point is, is, and I didn't say this while ago, but we're talking about putting walk bridges across the creek in about three or four, uh, spaces up and down the creek to give those kids that are going to the football game or going to a basketball game or baseball game, whatever, once this thing's built out. They don't wanna hang out with mom and dad, they can walk over there and play in the splash pad, or they can go over there at the amphitheater, there's playground over there. And, and what it does is it bridges a gap that we, we've never had in this community, and that is the school district co-op-ing with the city and, and making a more public used space out of spaces that, that, that we have. And obviously, for obvious reasons, I mean, high schools out here and the middle schools down here, and, and so we, we've had that deficit as far as the spacing out of schools. But I think with this master plan and, and now that the, the, uh, the activity center's kinda the hub of the city now, and, and we, we respect that and we know that. Our thing is, is we, we've gotta put our best foot forward both sides of this thing and, and put these two things together because they're, they're great areas, uh, for kids to grow up in, so.
Mark and I have talked about this, Height Jackson, as we've talked about this, you know, a lot of that parking down there that we're, we're talking about on that end is visitor parking for football games, parking for graduation, big events. So, so there will be a great use for that parking, but there'll also be times when that parking won't be needed as much. And, and obviously summertime, you know, sure it's not in session and that's a big time. And the opportunity to have the walk pads or the walk bridges for our students to even access the CTE building, and the thought of a road eventually possibly coming in there, uh, uh, really is, is, to me, it looks like a win all the way around.
It, it, it is, and the other thing that we, we hope to do is about every two or three years, to let you all know about the, the city side of it, about every two or three years, we get financing from our doc, right? And whenever we're connected, and, and this is for our, uh, through streets in the city, not, not state-maintained roads, these are for our city streets. And, uh, last year, we paved the enclave subdivision, we've been promising for years, kicking the can down the road, we finally got that accomplished last year. But what I anticipate, and, and Rome wasn't built today, so, and we know that, and we know that this, this activity center and, and the expansion hereof, it's not gonna be built overnight either. We know that this is a five, ten, fifteen, maybe even fifteen-year project. We wanna set ourselves up to be conducive to the fifteen-year game plan, and we wanna be able to bridge this gap. And so that's why we're kinda thinking outside of the box and that's why I put down there a future right-of-way. If we can ever, if, if we can ever extend that road, and let's say that we start out gravel with the concrete pads for the handicap parking, obviously. If we start out with that and we pack that thing in the way that we're talking about doing, and it's just gravel for right now, again, Rome wasn't built today, the moment that we touch College Street, that obviously becomes a viable option for us to pave all that, all the way through, curb and gutter, make it look nice all, all the way through there. So, and obviously clean up the creek and, and things of that nature to make it a little more, uh, advantageous for us putting, putting all the parking spots a, along through there. But I just, to me, it's, it's a win-win really, uh, and we definitely need, the city definitely needs the, uh, the parking. You probably are wondering what it's gonna take. I would say, uh, we're not even really, other than the, the spots that I showed you there with that, uh, future pond and that future, uh, parking area, we're not even really encroaching on anything that would be valuable or that you all would utilize. So the city, I'll, I'll, I'll state for the record that the city would be willing, if y'all are interested in this at some point in time, we'd be interested in doing the survey, we're talking about a fifty-foot area out from that creek that doesn't even really touch anything, we would pay for the survey, we would pay for actually the parking and all that good stuff through there, if y'all would be interested in, in, in helping us out with that because it's your property. You get to save what happens with that property. Uh, and we certainly don't wanna encroach if you don't want us there, but like Mr. Law said, I think it's a win-win for the city and the school district, so.
Absolutely.
And I, and I love the, definitely the underground storage.
Absolutely.
We all know you cannot keep kids out of a pond, no matter what you put up.
Yeah, and that's the only other thing I, I would say to you about like the, the future pond behind, or what we would anticipate maybe behind the CTE. There's a lot of liability that goes along with that, we've looked at it, I've talked to a couple other mayors in, in a little bit bigger cities, and, and the biggest thing is on that, is if we done it, we would have to absolutely put up fencing and all that, and, and only a certain age limit would be allowed, uh, depending on how deep it is, which y'all are probably aware how deep that holler is behind the CTE building. The Lord, it could be at the, at the devious point, twenty-two or thirty-foot deep there at the deepest point.
That's what I would say.
Narrow pond, but really deep. So we would have to do something on that, and I think really bridging that gap and maybe co-op and at some point in time, putting a bridge from one side to the other, a two-lane bridge across that. Man, I tell you, it just, it would make that, the corner of our world look a lot better and, and, and be a, a little more cohesive as far as the transportation aspect of it goes, so.
Anybody else have any thoughts or questions?
I just really appreciate all the work that you guys have done in the planning.
I, I appreciate it, Mr. Law, and, and it was one phone call, this is what, I have to say this about him. It was one phone call, picked up the phone, said, hey, love the idea, I need to talk to you. He said, let's get her done. And that's, that's, that's what you, that's what you want. Uh, and that's, I'm telling you, I just really appreciate it.
Makes sense.
It makes sense. Uh, about a fifteen-minute-long conversation and I'm here tonight, and I didn't actually expect to be here tonight, he kinda prompted that. Uh, and, and so I do appreciate that, so thank you all so much for hearing me out. And if y'all have any questions, you know where my office is. where my office is, both of yous got my cell phone number, all you got to do is call. I'll try to help you out however I can or answer any questions you might have. Oh, and by the way, that's a crude drawing, I've worked, I've asked Height Jackson Mark right before I come down.
I've talked to Mark a couple times today.
Yeah, and Mark had said, I said, "Look, can we get you to do a master plan to kind of show the, the park as well to the school board as well as city council, because they need to know what we're in here talking about too. Citizens need to know what we're talking about." And they said, "Absolutely, be happy to do that." So, they're gonna, he's gonna send me some preliminary stuff, and, and I think we can get that done for you, so.
We were having the discussions, I just thought it was imperative, we shared it with you all to know where we were. I think it's very exciting for both, both.
I do, too.
For the city. I think that's a, a great piece of property that can be used to promote our city and our school and.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm excited about.
Have y'all seen the master plan of this? You're only seeing a portion of it. Have you showed them the master plan of this?
Yes, of our master plan? Yes, they've seen our master plan.
Yeah, so I am absolutely impressed with what Height Jackson has done. They have, they have, the old adage is, is they have took two pounds of sausage and shoved it in a one-pound bag, is what they've done, and they've done a heck of a job, but they have done a really good job of that. So, anyway, I'm impressed with it.
We look forward to seeing what they get up for you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in on short notice.
You bet, you bet.
All right, excellent. Next thing, this is, this is on there, this, this is coming off. Highway 23 landsale. We, I have the document in my truck for me to sign, and I just, they, I picked it up today, haven't had a chance to look it over, I do want to look it over before I sign it. I plan probably to sign it tomorrow and get it turned back in, that will set up a closing date, and we will move forward. The buyer has signed, and so we are, I, I, I say every month, I think we're almost there, I do think we're almost there. It came up last month about the solar panels, that was kind of brought in before me, Matt played a role in that, I asked Matt to check up on that, so Matt, would you speak to where we are on the solar?
Sure. So, last we had heard, everything was pretty well finished with the solar panels, and that was quite a while back, and we were told that it wouldn't be kicked on for us to start getting kickbacks until February, so I just reached out to see if anything had changed, and that was still the case. So, it's looking like they're going to juice everything up in February, and we'll start getting some kickbacks from those solar panels. I know everything's built and ready to go, they may have been waiting on some parts, but all of that's on Carol Electric's end, and so integrity's kind of been going between us, letting us know, but that's still the, that's still the plan, is that in February, we're going to start getting some kickbacks from the solar panels.
Good job, man.
Which one of y'all going to talk about the school by yourself, Tony?
I'll, Blaine give us some updates just on the construction of everything, so.
All right, well, we've got, we're moving quite, we're moving quite quickly with it right now. We got the framing done right before Christmas break, yesterday the sheetrockers started in on it, they should be done muddying probably by the end of the day tomorrow. So, then we'll get into the trail work. We're looking, if I was to guess, probably, what are we looking at, mid-February for the grand opening on it?
So, we're, we're going to open it, and then we'll have a grand opening. I believe we're actually going to plan that around parent-teacher conferences, so March 18th, we'll have parent-teacher conferences at the elementary campus, so we'll have a grand opening focusing during that, so they can.
Go through there and see.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, but we're, we're moving forward with it, and it's just, it's the construction rolled down, I mean, we're, it's hurry up and wait. We got, as soon as the painter or the sheetrockers get done, then we can get in there and start doing our stuff with it, so. So, we're looking, the biggest thing right now is we got is this cold, I mean, it's, we've got, we've got a bunch of concrete work to do, and, and until we get a day or two that's about freezing, we can't pour it. So, I talked to the concrete finisher today, he's going to come in and start doing some of the dirt work on it, we've got to build some stuff to make it handicap accessible, we want to make sure that it's big enough that EMS can get their, their equipment in and out of the building and all that stuff, so he's got a lot of formal work to do on it, and he's going to try to get it done, and we can get some good weather, hopefully get it poured, so.
Good. And Kelly Vanover is, she's here today, she's on staff now, so she's working on enrollment packets and getting everything ready to go, so when we open up, it just takes off and goes, so.
And then, what do we ever decide on the lighting and everything, you know, I know we discussed it at one point.
Lighting.
Exterior lighting for.
For that, so, we haven't got a plan on that yet, but there are a few, there's a few lights on the outside of that kindergarten building. Those wall packs, but we haven't discussed in depth adding lighting up there.
So, fortunately, we got, I mean, they're not new now, they're what, 20 years old in the lighting, but the electric is there on the football field lighting, so we can actually set some outside lights up off of like some of the light poles of the football field.
Do like a photo sill or time flower or something where they can come on. I'm just more worried about, you know, the nurses leaving, you know, because the kids aren't going to be there at dark, you know, most of the time, but, you know, nurses leaving and just safety.
We are planning on designating parking spots specifically for that, right?
Yeah, yeah. I guess, is the sidewalk going to be kind of up against the school?
It'll be as close as we can get to it, you know, we have heat air units on the back side of that building, so we'll put it over as close as we can to the back of the kindergarten building.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. The only other thing I have there is, Matt and I had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Stein. Dr. Stein is your consultant on your facility's master plan that we do with the state of Arkansas. Dr. Stein is brilliant, he is a highly intelligent person, he was the person who helped draw the original plan up. I'm, I'm not going to be here as you move forward with it, but I will say you have excellent help there, you have as good a help as you can have in the state. Matt and I met with him, we have looked at a few things regarding the, the teardown of the middle school and how we would purpose some of those facilities, and we do think there's probably going to be a few changes that need to be made with what you did when you submitted your original master plan a year and a half ago, I guess it was now, to the state as we move forward. When I took the contract down to Mr. Chalk to get signed, he and I had a discussion on that. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, guys.
He had, we had a discussion on that, he is aware of that, that will, that will take place during the summer and as we move on, but that will need to be revisited by you all as a board and discussed, we're not ready to do that today by any means, but, but I thought it was an excellent meeting, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, we're just looking at repurposing those facilities and how we repurpose them, and it, it could potentially change our partnership funding.
How you work that, what you call it, can cost you money or help you gain money, and so.
Yeah.
Any questions? All right, going around the room real quick, Tina, anything you think that we need to add financially? Any concerns, anything you see, anything you want to share?
I'm concerned with, thank goodness. It's tax season, so that's what we're working on right now, I started that today, to myself, so, yeah, it's a fun time of the year.
Can I bring you all my pharmacy?
Yeah. In a shoebox, it's got a shoe.
A manila envelope.
So, anyway, that's, that's our part of the world.
Natasha?
Nothing new for me, just trying to get back in the swing.
All right.
We're just getting back in the swing of things, too, we have winter interims, February 4th through the 7th, so they will be here before we know it, and push them on.
First day back.
First day back.
Middle school?
I don't really have anything to share, other same thing, getting back into the swing of things, we do have interims coming back up, teachers are working hard teaching the students, and the students are working hard learning, so we're just getting out of there.
Jennifer, I kind of skipped over you, I figured you got everything covered while you were on there, so. Mike, how about high school?
Finally got our, our final banners up on the, the light poles, I think they look really good, I'll go buy a few of those. Hopefully that's just the first step, and really doing some things to, to build some school pride in our facilities and just to our school in general, so we're excited about that. We'll move right along, things go well.
Anything maintenance and custodial there?
I just want to kind of give a shout-out to my crew, you know, we've had this cold snap come in, we did not have anything frozen, anything broken, so they've done a pretty good job staying ahead of things for us, and I, I hope I didn't jinx myself, but, but yeah, this, this so far, good start to the winter.
The only thing I had is, this Thursday on the 9th is law enforcement appreciation day, and so I just want to thank our SROs and our PD and the city, that's been, all of our law enforcement, but that, that's just been a really great partnership with them, and we appreciate their continued support and training with them, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you to you all, it is school board appreciation month, so thank you for giving up your time and supporting our school district and our community, so thank you very much for that. It's almost career fair season for me, so I'll probably be traveling a little bit and get on some career fairs, so getting ready for that.
Okay, all right, thank you. It is, as, as Matt said, it is, it is school board month, and so we wanted to recognize you all for the work you do. That thing has been a pain in the keister, but I want to tell you, the kids did that. That, that is, that, those are comments from the kids about the work that you all do, and I hope you have an opportunity, not just to walk by, but to actually stop and look at that, and there are St. Paul kids on there, there's Huntsville kids on there, they're just our kids, all mixed together. And, and some of them really, really put some effort into it, and, and I will tell you, there are a bunch of them that say, "Thank you for the four-day week." We were laughing at it today, how many of them, how many of them say that, but, I mean, other buildings have brought in other things too, but, but I, I, and I'm proud of everything, but I'm really proud of the work that the kids put in with that. I, I, you know, I always hate to brag on Bailey, because his head gets big, but he, he, he really kind of took the bull by the horns on that, and he and Matt, I believe, worked, worked on your mugs, and I don't know, it might have been too dark when you came in, but, but maintenance hung a sign out in front of the building that we're going to leave up this month, thanking you all for, for the work you do and the vision you set and, and the direction you give to the district, and so we, we are grateful for that, and just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you. We do need also, I got this this afternoon, too, from the school board association, and I'm sure you've done this before, we need a person designated through the school board association to be your legislative liaison. So, as things come out that impact our board, rather than contact every board member, they send it to that one person, and then that one person then kind of represents you all.
I think Whitney typically did that.
Okay.
And since he's not here, I don't.
I was going to say, I'm home, he's here. I'm home.
I will list Whitney down as, as our lucky swag.
I was fucking happy.
We got a motion by Steve, second by Nick.
Sounds good, sounds good, bud. I have nothing else, now you all have anything else other than the personnel packet? You, you have seen the personnel packet? I don't know if, if there's any questions or anything you all want to discuss with that, my recommendation would be that we approve the personnel packet as presented.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Blaine, second by Nick, all in favor?
So, as, I know it's in here, I get lost in this book.
It's way at the back of the dirt.
What cabinet is it behind?
Personnel, first cabinet.
Personnel, it's seven.
It's in the back, yeah.
It's in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, to go over that, and the January 7th personnel, the hires are Elizabeth Funkin, Jolynn Nelson, David Robinett, now Mr. Robinett has been with us, but he is, he has completed all of his certification to be a, to move to the certified teacher salary and draw retirement, and, and we have not, he, that, he has not had that, and, and obviously, retirement and all that is important to him, and we certainly want to keep him, we think he does a wonderful job, so the resignations are listed there, Jessica Smith, Brianna Crowder, Ricky Head, and Michaela Cole, and that would be the, that would be the personnel that I would recommend. Anybody else have any other comments, concerns?
I just want to say that, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with Whitney and her family, as they're, you know, dealing with their loss, but other than that, I don't have anything else, does anybody else?
We've lost another alumni today from here, too, the green girl, Ramona.
That's right.
That's what they guessed her here today or something, she, she was big in the community and stuff while she was able.
Yes.
So, she was, there's another.
Just keep those families in thoughts and prayers, so. Saying that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Steve, second by Nick, all in favor?